Next item.
Boundary line changes, school of choice and boundary line exemption, Dearborn High School addition. I guess we're going to go with Mr. Thomas Waugh and Ms. Mason Ali-Bazey and Mr. Abe Mashur. Well, I can throw in Dr. Maliko too.
Call in.
He's in there, but I know he's not getting up.
Good evening, everyone. I think Mr. Wall is going to get us started, so.
Okay. All right, we're just going to follow up from our board discussion from, going back just kind of historical, just for the public's sake also, that we started the discussion back on May 1st to look at eliminating schools of choice, explore the Dearborn High School expansion, and actually get some additional projections done by Middle Cities and Plant Moran Cressa. Then we had our study session on August 29th where there was a general consensus made, and if I misspeak, please make sure we know so we're very clear on it, to move forward with planning for classroom additions, or four classrooms and a cafeteria addition at Dearborn High School, moved forward with planning for potential boundary changes, options were going to be presented tonight, and community meetings, which we're also going to talk about as we go forward in the process. And then Mrs. Ali-Bazey presented a calendar of events, so we're still on track for that, where we can see the upcoming months, we'll start the whole presentation going out to the buildings to kind of get feedback on what the general consensus was at the workshop meeting. If I'm going too fast, just let me know, but I'm just kind of recapping here. So we're going to move forward with some planning, exploring some additional options. At Etzel Ford was one of the discussions because some of the models that we talked about was actually adding students back to Etzel Ford. And then also potential expansion at the Berry Heights Center with some additional programs with Volk Ed and Michael Berry Career Center. All right, and some of the things that we did take off the table as we discussed was not to move forward with a ninth grade academy for Fortson, also not looking at a fourth high school. But we did look at, the board did say to go forward with the four classroom addition at Dearborn High because that was a timing issue to make sure that if we're going to move forward with it, that it could be available potentially for next school year, maybe not necessarily at the beginning, but at some point during the school year. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Abe to briefly go through the projection data.
Okay, as everyone knows, we went through the projections. Basically, we're looking for an increase in students. That's the bottom line. We're looking for the increase in students. Plant Moran's study has the highest rate of increase, ours is second, and then Middle Cities and Stanford fall behind after that. Okay, so now, looking at the future, at our future, what's the best way to do it? We can look year to year. Year to year is going to give us different data. So, you know, to just give us the best overall idea, we're not going to make any decisions. You're not going to make, I don't think, any decisions based on one year's data. So you have to look and see as to where we're going as a district over the next 10 years. If we make any changes, they're going to be some big changes, so we don't want to do, make any big changes based on a couple of years' projections, and we want to be able to sustain those changes, just like the last time we did boundaries was 13 years ago. We want to sustain those changes for at least 10 years, hopefully longer. If we look at the average number of high school students over the next five years, and the average number of middle school students by feeder, okay, so that's the kind of criteria that I use to come up with an average, the 65-60 average that you see before you. Okay, so 64-69 is pretty much the average number of students that were graduating over, from our middle schools, that we will be graduating from our middle schools, or moving ahead, I'm sorry, not graduating, from our middle schools, promoting to high school level. That's the number. Now, if we look at the rate of increase, Plant Moran had a higher rate of increase. Their rate of increase was almost at 3%. Ours was a little less than a half percent, so I kind of figured the 1.4% increase. Where did that number come from? Again, we look at the data from the past to determine our future, and we also look at our present. So if you look at our grades, and it's one of those little things, then I called Plant Moran Cressa to discuss it with them, haven't heard back from them, but reviewing all the numbers last week, our numbers in our lower elementary, specifically grades 1 through 3, are pretty low. So I don't understand how they came up with some of the projections they did, that they did come up with. Now, some of those projections, they add another number that's based on demographics and different things and so on, and like I said, for us, we use a similar kind of statistic, but their number was a lot higher than ours. So the 65-60 is a conservative number, but at the same time, it's, I'm sorry, the 64-69 is a very conservative number. The 65-60 is a little bit more, but at the same time, I couldn't, I couldn't make it too much higher because the last thing we want to do is look at having a number that's way too high that we just can't basically live up to. It messes up as far as our finances go, our budget goes, and then if we were, for example, you know, I know it's off the table now as far as building an academy or anything like that. If you're not able to sustain it, then you're, you have a whole slew of problems from there. The feeder alignment from before was basically done off of elementary schools. So basically, kids were in elementary, they split up by middle school, but they maintained from one elementary to the high school. So the Maples kids all went to the same high school, Dearborn High. The Woodmore Bowls kids all went to the same high school, Etzel Ford, et cetera. The three elementary schools that were split were Deval, Miller, and Oakman. Deval has about a 75-25 split, 75% going to Smith, 25 going to Etzel Ford. Miller has about an 80-20 split. Oakman is almost 60-40 between Dearborn High and Fortson. That's basically the average class sizes that we've been having, or we will be having, rather, I'm sorry, that we will be having in the future. It's a little bit higher than where we are today, but it gives us a good gauge as to where we're looking to be. Bryant generally promotes 270 eighth graders each school year. Lori, 190. Salina, 120. Smith, 190. Forty of the ones from Smith will go to Dearborn High. Those are our River Oaks students that go from, we have, River Oaks is another one that's split, sorry, I forgot to mention that one, but River Oaks splits between Smith and Bryant. We have about 40 students that go from the River Oaks community to Smith, and then they go to Dearborn High. And then most of the Smith students, as you see, go to Etzel Ford. Eunice has 215 that we generally promote from eighth grade. They have 40 that we bus in from the east end to Dearborn High, the rest go to Fortson. Woodworth has 310, pretty much all 310 go to, go to Fortson. STEM now gives us 55 students a year. It's usually 60, but we lose five kids, you know, in those four years of our STEM class in sixth grade and seventh grade, or sixth grade is 60. Seventh grade may lose one or two kids, and when I say lose, they may elect to go back to their regular middle school. So we generally, generally speaking, 55 is a good, safe number to go with first STEM. Now, before we get into the scenarios, we look at building capacities. Those are the building capacity numbers. I'm not going to read the chart to you, but you see that even if you add up all the capacities at our high schools, generally speaking, if every single high school student was going to be in the high school all the time, then we would definitely have to build a new high school. But that's not the case with all the other programs that we have, which we discussed before, as far as dual enrollment, the collegiate academy, et cetera. DC MST is another one. And when we get into the scenarios, just want to remind everyone that there is no perfect scenario. Every scenario is going to, and we can come up with 25 more scenarios as far as what kids are going to feed from which middle school to which high school. There are many, many different options that we can come up with. Basically, I wanted to look at three different options. The first option is the cleanest splits. You heard the special education department talking about co-teaching and some of the different things that they use in the elementaries, and then those students go to the middle school and then to the high school. Their entire special education's team, team is lined up by feeder. As Mr. Salee said, you know, he has, their coordinators are, one is responsible for the Dearborn High track, one for the Etzel track, one for the Fortson track. So this system here, scenario one, basically keeps us best aligned. There's no way around it. There's no way around it. We have to split at least one school. There's, we can't keep every single school going from that, like, you know, all those students going from that middle school feeder to the high school. We are going to have to split one or else Fortson would just be, you know, over, you know, 33, 3400 students. So scenario one basically splits Bryant and all of Smith. So all of Bryant and all of Smith would go to Dearborn High. So Dearborn High would have all Bryant and Smith students. Etzel Ford would have all of Salina, all of Stout, and then a small section of Woodworth. The section of Woodworth with 50 students, that would be the area west of Greenfield, in between north, I'm sorry, in between Michigan Avenue and Ford Road. So that section of Woodworth would be, would change. So that's really your only change, unless, I'm sorry, it's not your only change, but that's your only area that would be, would be impacted. Fortson would have all of Lori, which it currently has. All of Eunice, instead of most of Eunice, all of Eunice would go to Fortson, and then the majority of Woodworth. And that puts our numbers, it gives us a balanced numbers at Dearborn High and Etzel Ford, 1980, and then Fortson, 2780. Fortson's still going to be on the high end no matter, you know, how we look at it. Unless we want to bus a lot more students, which we don't want to do. It's not best for kids, and obviously, we can't afford it. And then the other part is having enough bus drivers and buses. Stop me anytime you want.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So I'm looking at the numbers that you have for the totals from the possible scenario, number one, to the, compared to the max capacities that you have for the high schools. So all of these numbers are higher than what we have as the max capacities in the schools.
Correct.
So does that account for the addition of the, the additions on the schools?
No, it does not count for the additions. The max capacities that we currently have here, with, even with the updated capacities, we still don't have enough space. So when we add classrooms at Dearborn High, and we add the, if we were to add the fieldhouse at Etzel Ford, now we're talking.
Okay.
Now we can hold that. Now Fortson's still going to be over capacity.
So right here, it's, we're looking at about, over by 125 students at Dearborn High, over by about, you know, 55, 60 kids at Etzel. So does that constitute for four classrooms at Etzel still?
What do you mean?
Well, again, that's still assuming all kids are in the building at once, and they're, they're shuffling during the day between DC MST and.
Right, right.
Collegiate Academy, dual enrollment, et cetera. But at the same time, these numbers don't include the four classrooms that were.
That's a new addition.
Yeah, not, yeah.
That's what I was asking.
This is up to date as far as any additions, not additions, any changes that we've made as far as converting classrooms and so on at Dearborn High and Fortson. That's what these numbers represent. Now, when we get into, you know, this scenario here, no, we would definitely have to add space at Etzel Ford, but Etzel Ford, as we spoke about before, is our best place to add space because we have the more, the most room there.
Trustee Tatschek comments. I know we're looking at numbers, and that's what we tasked you to do, but one of the things I'm looking at here to take into consideration is distance. Smith kids, especially the ones from Long and whatnot, traveling instead of to Etzel, which we've already had multiple complaints from the parents about the distance they have to go to get to Etzel. We're telling them now they have to go to Dearborn High, which I'm going to consider is a significantly longer trip than the other. I, but I don't know. I don't know that's what. Are we taking into consideration?
Absolutely. Like I said before, there is no perfect solution, and it's going to, it just depends on where they live. It depends on where the house is. Some houses are, it's a point, one tenth of a mile difference between going to Dearborn High and going to Etzel Ford. In some cases, it's actually closer for some of our Etzel Ford because everyone that's south of Michigan Avenue, so you might be a couple of blocks south of Michigan Avenue, and you have to go to Etzel Ford, which is further than going to Dearborn High. So in some cases, the, that's a moot point. In some cases, currently.
Do we know how many students would be impacted with a longer?
That would take me a lot longer than two weeks.
Yeah, a lot longer.
But we can figure it out.
Well, that's why I kind of wanted to see a polyplot of where the students are.
Yeah.
And where, because that.
A polyplot?
Yeah.
We can get you a polyplot, but yeah, that takes a lot more time. We have maps, but we don't, I didn't do a polyplot. Mark, but we can't.
That's what we used when we did the last boundary.
No, no problem.
That's why I'm saying it, because that's how we kind of decided, because we were able to actually visualize the students.
Yeah, if, if we can narrow it down from these scenarios to one main scenario.
Yeah, and it's not going to be perfect. I said, but I said, you know, are we just looking at numbers or are we trying to incorporate those?
We're looking at numbers, we're looking at feeders, et cetera. So for example, in scenario one, the Eunice kids that were getting bussed across town are not getting bussed across town anymore. So it's advantageous for students, you know.
Right. I said that, they wouldn't have the complaint.
Right. There's always going to be somebody to complain, I'm going to tell you that.
I'm just thinking the Smith, the Smith area, there, there could be a lot of kids who are going to be impacted more with a distance.
Yeah, you might, we might have, and again, I'm just totally, totally estimating, but I would say you might have out of that 190 kids that go to Smith, you might have, say, 70 to 80 that would be traveling a little bit further than what they are now. But of those 70 or 80, it'd be even a smaller percentage that it's actually, I'm sorry, it'd be, maybe about 60% of those would be where they're traveling further. Of the 70 or 80 where they're traveling further than they used to between Etzel Ford and Dearborn High. So, but I mean, we, well, we can do a polyplot, that's not a problem, and you know.
Or if nothing else, you're going to have to do a real good conversation with the.
That's going to have to be had regardless.
Your parents.
That's going to have to be, have to, have to occur regardless of which way we decide to go.
Pick your battle.
Absolutely, absolutely. But again, this, this is more of a direct feeder system. You know, like I said, Woodworth is the only one that's split, and we're talking about splitting, you know, 50 students per year, so a total of 200 students over four years. Okay? Now, here's a map area of what the Dearborn High boundary would change and look like. I'm afraid, thank you to Mark Andrews for helping me with that, but at the same time, I can't really zoom in without messing too many things up. So the next map would be the Etzel Ford boundary.
This is with scenario one?
Correct.
Okay.
So you see, it still feeds pretty much, you know, let me go back, oops. Okay, now, the reason I put Bryant, Salina, and Lori at the top of each one of those, so Bryant, pretty much Bryant kids are going to go to Dearborn High. It's the closest school, it makes the most sense, et cetera. Salina, same thing. We're not going to bus students from the south end, past Etzel Ford, and add another seven to 10 minutes, just depending on traffic and everything else to their ride, to send them to Dearborn High. Your other option would be maybe to look at Salina to Fortson, but Fortson isn't the one where you're trying to add students from, it's the one you're trying to take away students from, so that doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. Because I know the history, Salina students went to Fortson, and then it changed to Etzel Ford. That's one of the downfalls to this scenario as well. You look at the Stout, I'm sorry, the Smith students, you know, the Smith community generally went to Etzel Ford, that was, you know, the tradition, that was the history and so on. And so that's something that would change, of course. You know, the Stout students, you know, if you want to look at some of, some of that, the Maples kids of the Stout students, so that's 120 or 125 kids from Stout that went to Maples, they would have gone to all three high schools, because they used to go to Fortson. Now they go to Dearborn High, and if we make that change, they'd then go to Etzel Ford. So there's, there's a little bit to, you know, to consider with all that. But like I said, Bryant, Salina, and Lori are at the top because that's pretty much where they have to go, and then we just kind of tried to work with the rest of it. Now getting into scenario two, scenario two moves around from where we currently are the least number of kids. But again, we're still splitting. Now we're splitting three schools, and, you know, we're, we have, you know, a few changes as well. And this, this one here balances our numbers, you know, a little bit as well between Dearborn and Etzel Ford. Now Etzel Ford would be, actually be higher than Dearborn. So that's, that's something else. And, you know, obviously, we're doing a lot of work at Dearborn, we've done a lot of work, and we're looking to do a little bit more. So that's one of the things there. Now, we have those three streets in the Smith neighborhood, Park, Nona, and Beach, that we'd obviously have to look at and say, okay, Park, Nona, and Beach streets are all going to go to Etzel Ford, or they're all going to go to Dearborn High, as opposed to right now where they pretty much have their choice as to where they go.
Dr. Maliko, did you want to add something?
Just a comment too, that so that when you're looking at the numbers, just like the study session, this would be the phase in over the four years.
Correct.
So obviously, it would take time to get to those numbers, because when you shift, you know, ninth grade to tenth.
It's going to take three years at the very least. And really, you know, our big spikes are coming in 2018, 19, and 1920, our biggest spikes as far as what we see right now.
You mean coming into the high school?
Correct.
Okay.
As far as our high school numbers go. But if we kept it as is, then we need a lot more than four classrooms at Dearborn High because their numbers look to go up very, very much. Scenario three, again, just gives you different ways of looking at it, but again, it's not going to affect as many students as far as changes, because currently, this is, Bryant would stay the same, Stout would stay the same, Eunice would stay the same at Dearborn High. We would not have made any changes at Dearborn High. Salina, Stout has a minor change because we took those 20 students of Stout. Stout, if you remember, split into all three schools. We have a section of the, of East Dearborn where those kids go from Maples to Stout, and then they go back to Fortson. It's about 20, 20 students per year, you know, give or take, you know, a couple of kids. So if we would have moved all, like, split Stout, so it's only to two schools as opposed to three, it affects the numbers in that way. Smith, all of Smith, again, we had a small percentage of Smith, only 40 students or 45 students of Smith go to Dearborn High. We pushed them all to Etzel Ford, so Etzel Ford's numbers go up a little. But it brings Fortson down a little bit and, you know, keeps Dearborn High 1800, 1820. Now, again, like I told you, there's, there are many scenarios, and I thought of a different one when I was sitting here during, during the meeting and some of the earlier conversations. So we can go, we can, we can give you as many scenarios as you want. The key is to think about and to consider, what are the things that you want to do? Do you want to keep them, keep schools from a middle school feeder, primarily going to the same high school with somewhat of the balance when it comes to numbers? But like I said, in any way you look at it, you're going, we're going to have to split at least one school.
I want to note that for all three of these solutions, the scenarios, the solution would require then Etzel Ford expansion and the four classes at Dearborn High regardless of any of these options.
Correct. And option one, as far as transportation goes, option one is the only one that helps us alleviate some of the transportation issues that we have.
Okay, that's it on the presentation, or do you have another slide yet?
No, that's, that's it for me.
Yes, I think there's one more slide.
Yes, on the money side. Just want to put out some of the numbers out there that we can work with. I worked with our financial consultant, that if we wanted to actually do a non-voter bond, like we did roughly about 10 years ago when we updated athletic fields, we are capped by 5% of our state equalized value. So right now, as we stand right now, we could actually go out to and issue bonds for roughly $24.5 million that we could do without going out to the voters and be paid from our limited tax, which is our general fund basis. The enhancement funds, we're going into our second of six years. That's roughly about $8 million a year, so there's roughly about $40 million to what we have coming in in future years. We can always bond forward, that we can actually bond now against those proceeds. That's a common practice. The way we're doing it now is every year, we sit down with administrative team and the unions and the students and the board members to look forward to how we want to spend those monies on a year-by-year basis. It's basically cash that should go, as we get the money in, we plan how we're going to spend it the next year. That's our current plan. But I just want to make sure you know that there is at least another five years of the enhancement funds. We have the sale of Howe, Old House School, that's currently going to be in our fund balance, so that is something we have currently that's available. We have, also, we roughly transferred $2.6 million to a building and site fund. That's money we're using now to keep the buildings up to par, to replace parts of the building as needed, and try to do, like this year, last year, I think we're working on roofs, trying to get our roofs under a 10-year maintenance agreement, that if anything happens in the next 10 years, it'll be covered by our warranty. And then we also, coming up this year, have the last, two of the last three bonds on where we did the athletic field 10 years ago, which we did do non-voter approved bonds. So that'll roughly give us about $850,000 additional funds in a general fund that we've been paying down those bonds in previous years, that will be now available for another purpose. So I just want to kind of give you some of the five, top five items that we have out there. Just as you think about it, there is money available to do something. Again, I think the priority is actually what's best for kids, and I give Abe a lot of credit because just trying to sit down with him and talk through some of these options, it is amazing, all the different variables that go into play, and I give him a lot of credit of trying to even try to limit it down to three options, because there's a, I don't know, mathematically, a lot of variations that you can actually look at, so I don't behoove you your discussion.
Okay, so the floor is open for discussion now. We don't have numbers, what we are missing are numbers for a four-classroom addition at Dearborn High.
Yes, so the numbers that I worked with Jeff Burke, we didn't have time to go back to the architects and actually get a defining number, but Jeff estimated roughly about $3 million for that addition at Dearborn High.
Is that including the cafeteria?
The cafeteria addition is included, yes.
And for Etzel Ford?
So Etzel Ford, that's a little more nebulous. We actually looked at some other projects that are going on currently. There was one at Lance Cruz, I believe, and Woodhaven, which I recently came from. I worked on that project myself. That was for an auditorium and an auditorium, which is a kind of a pool-type scenario, was anywhere from 12 to 15 million. Now, we would be actually doing a little bit more than that because we would take the existing space and actually re-renovate that to actual classrooms, so I would probably have to add another $3 million onto that, just renovate where the existing space is into actual classrooms.
And is that cementing over the old pool too?
Correct, that would actually fill in the pool with self-leveling cement, and then go from there.
Yeah. And we are convinced that at Etzel, we, I mean, I know, I know the dream that Mr. Casebo has, but would it be more fiscally responsible to, I know the pool's going to require some kind of work, but to rather, to just add classrooms there and fix the pool, would that support these kind of student numbers?
That's probably a larger discussion, because right now, all three of our pools at the high school are old, and they've been kept up nice, but they're still old. We don't have a diving well in any of the three pools, so we actually use the Dearborn Rec Center for diving for that purpose.
Yeah, I know, it's part of that.
So it's been difficult to have diving at one site, have a swimming at the other site, so there's always those kind of issues.
Well, yeah.
Dreams, you know.
Yes, yes. So it's a matter of priorities and.
People have had that on their wish list. The diving community has it on their wish list for the last 20 years or more. But that's a big ticket item, really big ticket item.
Pools normally are, yes.
So, so the expansion at Etzel Ford has to have, like, the fieldhouse type of, it can't just be just additional classrooms?
You could do just the classroom, yes, but you're also looking to Dearborn, you'd have to do something with the cafeteria, obviously, to expand that area also.
Right, but, but we could support those student numbers at Etzel with just classroom additions and whatever we have to do to keep the rest running.
Right, that was, that would be a further conversation with the architect to make sure we go through that process, yes.
Yeah, that's more conversation, but I think I would have that conversation.
Okay, I'll be glad to do it.
Trustee Barry.
Slide number four, timeline.
Yes.
In the middle of the slides, stakeholder communication meetings. Can you elaborate on that? What does that mean? Who are we going to meet with? How, you know, what part of the community?
Our plan is to meet with all parts of the community, even with the schools that are not necessarily directly affected. We're going to follow the same type of plan that was implemented for the bond in the village in previous years, where we had meetings throughout the entire district at different times of the day, and we shared information, and then that gave our stakeholders an opportunity to have their voices heard and their ideas shared with us as well. So that, that timeframe right there is October, December, that was, you know, tentative based on what direction we get from the board. But really, it's just going to be dialogue sessions.
Is it going to be dialogue where we're looking for feedback? Are we going to take feedback into consideration?
Like we throw all three scenarios at them?
Absolutely, whatever scenarios you want us to share, then that's what we'll share. But we're also, what I envision and what we envision is that we get feedback, and then we compile all the feedback that we get from those meetings, and then use that in our next study session, if we have another study session. It's, absolutely, that would be an essential function of those meetings.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not like, this is what we're doing.
Oh, no, that's not.
This is what the board decided.
Yeah, no.
We're looking for, like, real feedback and.
Yeah, actually, just while we're dialoguing right now, I'm thinking about it. In addition to those meetings, we can even have, like, a link on our website where people could go on and go, give feedback that, using that method as well. And my guess is that you all are going to get feedback from.
You think?
Community members, and so if you could keep track of that, or we could do a shared Google Doc where you all join in and, and enter the feedback that you get. But yeah, definitely the goal is that we gather feedback. That's our opportunity to have face-to-face conversations because while technology is nice, it's also nicer to be able to talk about things and hear other people's idea like what Mr. Misher just said as far as he just had an idea while he was sitting there. But the more you talk about it, the more ideas you, you come up with. And you know, like trustee Petlicoff just said about Edsel having, well, can we just do classrooms and maybe not a fieldhouse? Absolutely, that's another idea that we need to explore.
However, we do have a timeline.
Yes.
We can't, we can't keep talking.
Drag it forever, yeah.
We can't talk forever. We have to make a decision. We have to force ourselves to pick one of these options and there's going to be something unpalatable about everything. I will say, and I don't know if anybody else has heard this, but I know some other people have told me that they're getting similar feedback. When I'm talking, remember, we could always have online voting amongst the students or their families and that tells us something. The, maybe it would even tell us what citizens, regular citizens want or don't want. But one thing I am hearing is that people are very concerned about another tax increase. So that, I'm getting that message consistently, that we have financial constraints and our ability to, to pass a millage might be limited. I don't know what other people are hearing, but that I've heard from.
That's all I hear.
That's what I'm hearing strongly. So I don't want to tell people, here's a smorgasbord, you can take whatever you like. We, we have limited options.
So when we put together that ti, that calendar of where we're going to be at what locations and at what time, we'd like some direction from you as far as are these the four options that we're going to go out to say, these are four options we're going to start with and then give us more ideas and we can tweak those options based on the feedback we gather? Or do you want us to go out and say, we're not going to share any options, just tell us what you think?
No, no, no.
That's so general, that could go in, I mean.
That, that won't get us there, yeah, so what, now looking at the.
They'll be pointing at everybody else to.
Everybody will want somebody else to change. They don't want to change themselves.
And Mr. Wall over here, he is like the timeline master even in our meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Wall, for keeping us on.
So.
So we have three options here on the table, or do we have four?
Three of three.
Scenario one, two and three, I don't know where the four came from.
Can, can I add then though, with, with the options to make it more palatable to some, can we get some pricing of, I, I know Mr. Misher was happy that we got rid of busing, but maybe that would make, you know, if we were to do a scenario where we had a, a, a good number of students who are being impacted with distance, if we were to, and I know that opens another door, so we'd have to, we'd have to craft it in a way that didn't give an expectation then that everybody and their brother could climb in and say, I also want my student bused because it's, I mean, there has to be a real distance issue, you know, over one mile or something.
So you'd like just to make sure.
And know how many students, if we were to go with these different scenarios, would fall under that umbrella and how much that would cost us and if we could even manage it with the busing.
So transportation costs.
Transportation costs.
Associated with each option. Availability.
Yeah.
Cost and availability.
And give a parameter, you know, if we were to change the students' boundaries and they fell outside, you know, what they're currently traveling.
Okay.
And the first one, I think there were some savings because you were saying reduction.
There was no busing, but I'm saying maybe that's a trade-off we would be willing to consider in order to make this, you know, work.
Well, I favor anything that generally speaking is going to reduce busing. I mean, generally, we all probably want that. It reduces costs, it reduces inconvenience, it reduces time wasted. So that's one principle that, that will decide for me. And another one is I generally want to keep tracks together, yeah. Anybody else want to?
I would agree with the idea of keeping the feeders together. It seems strange to me that you go to your elementary schools and you come together for middle school and then you're back apart. So reducing the number of schools that are split, I think would make a lot of sense.
I second that.
I can also mention something in consideration of time. I would like to make sure that you guys are comfortable with me to move forward with the architects and start defining these costs even greater of actually starting to design what the classroom actual expansions would be because that is a lengthy process. It could take up to a month if not more of actually doing the, the detail orientation of these designs.
For Dearborn High?
Now, that might cost us a small amount of money in architectural costs, but it's going to save us a lot of time when the decision is made, which way to go.
Should we be considering one of the plans that gives the, uses up the least footprint? Or should we be considering the plan that where, were to be necessary, we could add on an addition over?
At this point, since I don't think there's a general consensus yet, I would just move forward with the three options we have of just a classroom addition at Dearborn, a classroom addition at Edsel, and then even looking at the footprint of, you know, you know, a gym and auditorium. Just starting to actually move forward with those kinds of.
Going back to the study session, I think we were under the idea with Dearborn High to expand G Hall.
That one at G Hall at that one end, yeah.
Correct.
But then with Edsel, I would almost think, show us the same type of.
And we haven't had those discussions with the architect, not knowing what the infrastructure might be.
But give us the ideas just like you did with Dearborn where you showed us a few different options.
Correct.
If, if we just add independent classrooms or are we converting a portion of the gym and, and the pool?
I just make sure the boards, you know, it's not a lot of money, but I want to make sure we move forward for the consideration of time.
We're going to need to do it, so.
All three of these include that.
Yeah.
Correct.
So the four classrooms, we need that. We need that estimate for Edsel.
At the bare minimum, yeah.
And then we need possibly a couple of different scenarios on the gymnasium. Maybe numbers on a, a new pool too. We probably need that for all three schools long-term. Do we want to talk about number one, number two, number three? Everybody look at number one, number two, number three. You've looked at these. Does anybody have number one?
Just, just from my notes going forward. From what I'm hearing is we want to decrease busing and split the la, the least amount of schools and that's what number one gives us. It only splits Woodworth and it's decreasing transportation.
But I'm not necessarily canceling the opportunity to bus if it, if, if it's really going to impact some section of the student population with number one. I mean, somebody said they were, want to decrease, but not all of us are into that.
It will always depend on cost too.
Well, that's why I want numbers. I'm not ready to take that off the table.
So I'm, I'm trying to throw this out. Is there anything we can eliminate? Anybody not like?
One, two or three?
Yeah, I mean, does everybody, do people have a strong preference or a weak preference for number one, two or three?
Without more information, I also have to agree with trustee Naster. Right now I'm looking at one, however, I do think that the information that trustee Petlicoff is looking for could, it would be of importance to us in making those decisions. Scenario two, I think, is some, is a scenario that is maybe least favorable to me. It splits up the schools and it increases busing. I think right now I'm looking at scenario one and scenario three for myself.
I would probably agree with that. Those are the two that seem.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts on this?
Does anybody prefer scenario two?
We need, we, of course, we need to see cost numbers, yeah. Number two, anybody have a strong preference for number two? I.
So should we just go forward with one and three and move with the, with the cost preferences from there? At least this will, you know, reduce the amount of work for them and get as much information as we can on two scenarios that we all think are, right now are best options.
I, I tend to favor number one also. I like that it decreases busing. I like that it keeps schools together. I like anything that's going to reduce the number at Fortson because that number is, is too big.
But probably the public needs at least two options.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I'm looking, I'm liking one, I'm not liking two as much. And I agree with trustee Hamud, one and three are my preferences right now.
Yeah, mine too.
Trustee Petlicoff, you were going, you had your, or was it trustee Barry?
Is there a great savings right now if we eliminate two? What do you see, I mean, what is, how do you see that?
Just in time, just the allocation of time, resources. We just kicked off the school year, went very well. I give a lot of kudos to Mark Andrews and his department of handling all those blessing issues as kids continually get added every day. So now that the year has kicked off, you know, we can start using more of his resource time to look at some of the issues and develop polyplot maps because that's one of the functions of that system, to be able to look at students and where they're at. So I think time is going to be what the, the greatest, you know, resource that we have to work with.
I just also want to share this Thursday, myself, Ms. Shannon Peterson, Ms. Rose Elder Bailey, we are going to walk through the high schools during a school day when the kids are in session just to see if we can see any, if we can locate any additional space because we're not there every day, so we're fresh eyes. And so we're going to actually be walking through all three schools on Thursday.
I appreciate the effort.
Yeah.
I was going to say, part of that, thank you. And part of that is we wanted some individuals that were not in the building or in that specific feeder that also have experience as educators that kind of understand class size and capacity. Because as you can see, we have capacity numbers that the board agreed to several years ago, but they're two different numbers because it depends on what you're saying capacity, recommended maximum, and then that all impacts instruction. So what we thought, we do our due diligence and just make sure that we kind of have an outside, Mr. Wall was a proponent of this as well, to go into the three and just get as much data. And I know we provided you with a lot of data at the last meeting and we appreciate your time. I know it's a lot of work, all the, you know, review, but it's very important. And so we thought that this would be, you know, something positive, that we would have another look just to make sure, you know, you know, what's being used. Edsel would be the, the specific one because as, when Mr. Casebolt was here, if you recall, at the study session, you know, and when it said eighteen hundred, but he's saying, well, no, and he's telling us maybe a little less when you deal with special ed and some of the other programs. So that way it gives us another reassurance that, you know, we feel good about our numbers because that, the one thing I was concerned about coming out of the study session, you might recall at the end, was I wanted to make sure that, you know, if we were talking about shifting kids to Edsel, that we have enough space. And that's where the expansion was something and once the board said, oh, okay, we're looking at options there, then I was, you know, quite comfortable with, with that. But I just didn't want to get us in a situation where all of a sudden you shifted the, the overcrowding to a problem to another school, you know, and, and I think that's.
None of us want that.
Yeah, so, so this is just another way and I just wanted to, you know, that's the purpose of why they're going around and they're going to make sure.
So what's the next, for time's sake, what's the next step forward? I think that they need direction from us. My personal opinion is that we go with one and three. That's my own opinion. To, to bring back more numbers and evaluate those two options. What's everybody else's opinion, just so they can have some direction for?
If there is no cost savings, eliminating number two, I'd like to keep it on the table for the simple fact that I keep hearing that we want to keep the feeder together and number two keeps Eunice as, as one block. Unless there, unless I hear that there's this great savings financially, which I'm not hearing. That's my opinion.
I would go with one and then three, but it's not really close. I like one a lot more than I like three, but if it's just in order, that's the way we would look.
Uh, trustee Barry, with, with Eunice in number one, it still stays as a block at Fortson?
Yeah, but my original, I started my conversation is I don't want to go to parents and say, this is what we have. I want to really give them options. I don't want to say, you know, hey, pick and choose which, who do you want us to do? I want to give them options. I don't want to say it's either A or B or whatever because we're, we're going to be, we're going to be affecting people's lives here. This is their children, this is their homestead, the whole nine yards. So I would like, I mean, give them options and get some kind of feedback, true feedback from them.
And quite frankly, if you lay out all of the different scenarios that we've already worked up and they can see for themselves what the options are for us to balance those numbers and they see all of this, they may very well on their own come to the conclusion that number two or number three or whatever doesn't work because of that. But they'll at least know that we've given them that opportunity to look at. We need to get the numbers here at each of the high schools. These are the pieces of the puzzles that we can move to make that happen. Which one is most appealing, you know? And if you only give them one or two, then they feel that you haven't considered the others. Well, we're going to show them what the other would look like. And that way it kind of, it, it's clearer to them then when they see them all side by side. You take them off the table, yeah, you take them off the table, then they, then they can't really compare things.
So let's go ahead and get all the analysis.
So what we'll do is we'll get together a, everything's recorded, so we'll go back through the video and make sure we don't forget anything. Tomorrow morning we'll say, what was being said? No, so we'll keep all three options. We'll schedule a calendar of stakeholder communication meetings as soon as possible so we can get started with those. We'll present all three options. We'll collect the feedback from all those meetings as well as having some type of technology integration for people that can't attend the meetings but want to be heard. You also want some additional numbers, correct? Cost?
The poly, poly plot, I think, too, right?
Well, I'll hold off on the poly plot if we can, if we can.
Okay.
Hey, I'm old, I'm old school.
If you want to narrow it down to two.
If we, if, if, if I get the, but, the transportation number for, for the one solution that's going to impact students, the farthest distance, I'll be happy with that.
Okay, okay. So we'll go ahead and do that and then one thing I was looking at on the timeline. We don't have, I mean, we have right now the meetings between October and December. So what are we right now? September, I'm mid-September right now. So we'll say that we'll start right beginning of October probably. David will be working on, Dave Muston will be working on the schedule and the locations. So we'll share that with you ahead of time. And then also, say we wrap up those meetings by the end of December for the holiday break and then we come back in January, we should have some feedback by then. You may want to consider may possibly a board study session at that time?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I'd like to understand, actually, are you suggesting going to these meetings with, with or without details on numbers of student, numbers of change in transportation and costs? Yes, you're talking about October and I mean, yeah.
Maybe wait till the next board meeting, do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to have a board meeting October ninth, yeah.
So how about we have the change in numbers and cost and transportation at the next board meeting?
Right, right, right.
And then we schedule the meetings following the next board meeting.
And we're going to be running some things concurrently. It, it feels that we're in agreement with Dearborn High needs an addition, probably four rooms. We'll need to be voting on that so we can get rolling on that one. Whereas the boundaries, we don't need as long of a runway to get going in that.
That we can implement. We can decide if we can.
So those meetings will begin after the next board meeting? I'm sure you'll have some additional thoughts after this meeting? Because that's what we do.
Yeah, which is what email is for, right?
And Mr. Jaffar will be working side to side with Mr. Muston and they'll be kind of.
Oh, scheduling them.
Scheduling the teams that will go out to the building, so they've already been kind of planning that, so.
So does anybody have anything else they need for the October meeting?
Directions.
We're good?
Thank you.
You can tell Amy to get on the computer, we don't need the poly plot.
Trustee Petlicoff, that's something my mom would say.
Something my mom would have said and she would have known what it was too. All right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you.